Come by our office and review school improvement plans for those schools in the district. Because school improvement plans will be on the news no more than a week. And we'd like you to have time to review those documents. The school department has written down with those. We are still editing and revising, but we should have one for you to see so that you feel comfortable bringing them. Anytime after two thirty.
This one is a vague specific category. Previous work. We want our feedback from this section.
The fifteenth of the month.
Fifteenth.
Fifteen in the month. We will not have another policy work session until January. And at that time, we will start section four thousand, which is our student. And Jen, we'll go through just as we did last half, showing you the policy up here and then getting your input and all the way through. And if you have questions, please let us know.
So I was checking Connie right before we started. We did not have any additional changes to your previous series that you will be considering tonight. Not to say you can break them off tonight, but at least we did not receive any changes over the last DVD. This continues with the series two thousand. You'll note that we, the cover sheet in your folder talks about a couple where we, the committee, which is Ron Hart, Chip Craig, Connie and myself. We do have a few, not necessarily changes but modifications. And again, in the SCFC packet, when they give you four policies, often they give you options. So many of those may not be strictly changed. They may just be options that they gave you. The ones that are listed are two, twenty-three hundred, which is the first one we're starting with. Twenty-three-ten, twenty-three-twenty-five, twenty-three-thirty, and then twenty-three-thirty-five. Other than that, all of them are pretty much related out of the SCFBA. Well, sometimes you look at two, doesn't mean you can't change some, but those were the only ones that we felt that you would need to change or alter. So we'll take a look at twenty-three-hundred first, which deals with board meeting. Hopefully you have a chance to at least glance through the, pretty much standard stuff on where we had our first area that we felt there was a reason to make that change. And that was an option given to us in the SCFBA. Tentacles of the, under emergency meeting, who decides when to call emergency meeting? The committee felt that rather than having two members comply on an emergency meeting, that a majority of members requesting it would be a logical reason. Or if the chairperson determines that a meeting is necessary, so we made that number. We also made a shift in, for retreats and workshops, if you decided, for example, if you had determined that you wanted to take some action on the policies that you're just reviewing today, we felt it was important to the board to have that flexibility, making sure that there's advance notice provided to the public that you're going to take some action. So unless we, unless we actually state that there is going to be action taken, the preference is not really to take action at a workshop. So you'll see the red language change there. Add the note theory and with advance notice, public action may be taken at a work session or retreat. So we added that. And then the only other change here, under other special meetings, may be scheduled. Chairperson or the vice-chairperson, if the chairperson is unable or unwilling to act, will call a special meeting to address the topic when. And again, we made a majority of numbers opposed to two members to request. Or if the chairperson determines that the, so the chairperson can sculpt wrong the desire of the board. But the board, if a majority wants to have a meeting, needs to. And that's the end of our change. Question? Yeah.
I guess I have a concern with the last part. We said the chairperson may come to the decision of the board. The chairperson is not a greater part of the board. It's still like twenty-seven of the board as a fraction as opposed to being, you know, having more ways. So the, they're both counted, same as everybody else.
Well, that's the. I think the reason for that is that, and that's always been, and that's not a change here. The reason for that is, let's say we needed a special meeting for some emergency, a true emergency, and the entire board cannot get together to vote. This way, that the board chair still has the opportunity to call that special meeting even if all the board members cannot be reached. We'll take, again, in case of emergency. That's why I think that's.
I don't think it's red to indicate that the chairperson has the right to prohibit the means of call by a majority members.
Yeah.
Inducted to the board.
Right.
So it's either.
Either.
I think the primary concern, maybe wrong with these a lot, is it's not really.
Well, if the chairman calls a meeting and he's not going to shut it up, it can't happen either. That's right.
Logistically speaking, I think maybe that's the reason that the two person, two people can decide about calling an emergency meeting. I think it would be hard to get four people, maybe even contacted by phone to say, you know, do you think we should have an emergency meeting? I think that's probably the reason that they put two, two people in there. And I don't have a problem with, you know, saying, you know, verbatim what came from the School Board Association manual. I just think logistically, it's going to be hard to get a majority, you know, contacted without leaving messages. If there's true emergency, you know, I think two people will be able to determine that. So that's my, just, you know, my perspective on that.
Twenty-three-ten, public participation at board meetings. Several different categories of participation here. Here's the part A, is the request to place an item on the agenda. And again, we're not making any recommendations on this one. The one that we're taking right from the school board association. Tentacles, blank how to place an item on the agenda. Talks about public comment, that having at least one part of the regular, we definitely need those sides, because of the road awards, chief, senior students. One thing that they do, that we actually researched a number of other school systems. And often, the school board set a certain amount of time, not just per person, but the common amount of time seems to be about thirty minutes. If the thirty minutes isn't used up, it certainly could be, or is used up, it could be extended. But often, they set that. This gives you that option if you want to do that. It doesn't say you have to, but it is something that other school systems need to do. It also says the superintendent shall develop additional procedures to ensure the public comment sessions proceed in an efficient and orderly manner. One way that can be done, again, is, for example, when we had our, our religion group, with so many people speaking, rather than sticking with a three-minute time limit, you might look around and see that you have seventy-five people to speak and say, in the interest of time, we're going to try to let everybody speak, but please limit your comments to thirty seconds, a minute, whatever you feel appropriate to do. So you have flexibility there. You have flexibility within the, to make changes based on how you expect the meeting to go, for example. There are a lot made. Down here, under reports of complaint. Complaints about the performance of school personnel, implementation of board policies, quality of educational program, or school facilities should be submitted initially for response to the school system official responsible for the program or facility, or to the superintendent. Superintendent or designated shall make available this policy and other relevant grievance procedures to any individual or group to the meeting in question. And then what's in red here? Is this in red?
That's new language.
Is this new language? Oh, this is wake. This is what wake adds. We know that a lot of school systems add something, this is what wake adds. The laws and policies of North Carolina provide that issues or concerns involving individual personnel matters are confidential and therefore not appropriate for public comment sessions. Concerns related to personnel issues may be addressed through the board's grievance policy.
Something that came up at the law conference that I thought, I don't think that ever happened, but I think it was an important, very important issue. It was about the chairman now. And not only do we need to stop the negative comments about personnel, but also we need to stop positive comments about personnel. Yeah, still about personnel. So I think it's important to have everyone on the board, that we're, so that we're consistent with all sort of positive now. I was trying to remember if anyone has ever come up and does call a comment something positive about personnel. But it may have happened once that I can think of.
We discussed that in, we had a conference call with the community of the School Board Association. She brought that to our attention as well. It is best to be useful. And we can recommend that because we also have young children involved in public comments.
And notice this is also more about individual personnel matters. So if someone wants in a public comment to get up and say that, I want to thank these faculty staff at the subject school for their fine job. Or I don't like the faculty and staff, or their awful job. You know, that would be appropriate, public comment. But when it turns to one individual personnel issue, one, I don't like this teacher for this reason, then that is something that's better involved in agreements. I mean, if they come to the board later, you know, for, but that's not the most appropriate manner, at least to deal with individual personnel.
Or a team of teachers.
Yeah.
That's getting pretty close to personal, isn't it?
Yeah.
I guess I have a problem with, if we approve this policy prior to approving the one for students here in grievance procedures, cross-reference at the bottom. We aren't really, we can't refer somebody to the grievance procedure that we haven't passed yet. So they would have no outlet for their concern.
We still have a grievance.
We still, where are other policies?
Everything will be cross-referenced to what exists now until it changes. So we can know it's on here for the new ones, you know, it's on the.
Can you give me that policy number, the existing one?
I know we have the employees.
It's seven-thirty, I believe. Seven-thirty to seven-thirty, or. Policy seven-thirty. You hear the right thing.
She told me it's not.
Oh, sorry.
I'm not aware of the grievance policy for parents. Which is actually something I would bring up tonight when I'm leaving.
See, it's coming up in the next section of the four thousand series. So it will be in the next, we're to be taking into consideration. The four thousand-ten, or the early ones.
Can you email me the link or the password? Because I don't have that email that was sent at the last meeting that changed the password. I'm sorry, use my school board account. I don't have that email.
That's, that's specific. Don't get it, the personnel.
Not, not part, well, this is the procedure for personnel.
This one is right fully. Right beyond.
Well, you'll have one next one.
It's coming.
But in the ten intermediate time that we are not having all of our policies about, we will certainly help any parent if they have concerns that we get parent calls frequently.
Do you mind speaking into the mic when you, thank you very much?
Yeah, could you repeat that, I could hear.
We will certainly add that as our four thousand series comes to the work session in January. That will be one of the first policies. And we will have, we will help any parent that has an issue or would like to have help in solving a problem and solution at a school setting, just as we always do, until we have that form of policy. All right, right here, it says, I mean, within the body, the complaints about the performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, quality of education, or school facilities should be submitted. So that addresses it right here in the policy, does it not? Or not, misunderstanding something?
Yeah, generally, it does, yes. If you have a complaint about something going on at the school, it should go reported to the principal of that school.
Whoever's in charge of it.
And, or you can always report to the superintendent.
And we take parent calls daily. And I.
Yeah, I think the issue is that there's no appeal process to take it to the board. They're not happy with the decision made at the local school level or the superintendent. Is, can we, I don't know if you could pull up policy four thousand-ten? I just wanted to see if that grievance policy addresses those issues.
For student discipline and athletic experience, do you have the right to appeal?
Or, I'm sorry, setting.
For student discipline or athletic issues.
Other comments on this one? Thank you.
Clients that are at the meeting hall. If there's anything here that's unusual. With the policy number twenty-three, twenty?
I believe the ones that are separate, the ones that have red, changes, and the others.
You've got several.
Stable the others don't match.
We need to do twenty-three-twenty-five now. Board meeting needs coverage.
And all we saw down here was where they have an antiquated statute about charging a listener a fee of up to twenty-five dollars. To pray the cost of the public to listen to me, which I'll figure out when anybody asks to do. People will listen to the audio, it goes along the website. But if you'd like to charge, it's great. Thank you.
I'm curious about the last sentence. Says that the board holds a meeting by conference telephone call or similar means to provide some means for members of the public to listen to the meeting. And I think, I guess, that's true when we call in, if we can't be at a meeting, we'll do the phone call, we'll put on speakerphone so everyone can hear. I guess that would apply to that as well.
Well, mainly it's why, really, if we had, if we were scattered throughout the world and decided to have a meeting, that the public would have the same opportunity to listen to that be, in a former fashion. Because there's remains of doing it now. Necessarily cheap, but you can be done.
This is regarding the board meeting agenda. The change is, and this is a fill in the blank, I believe, where each board member will receive a copy of the agenda no later than four calendar days prior to the meeting. And the agenda will be available for public inspection and or distribution no later than two calendar days prior to the meeting. And I think the reason for that is to try to get it to the board in time where you can see what's going on before it's released to the public.
I don't know if anybody could consider that we just distribute the agenda to the public at the same time it's sent out to the board? Because we can't make any changes to it. Once we receive it, until we get to the actual board meeting.
The purpose is to give the board members an opportunity to review the material, to be ready for anticipated questions, to try and help the public.
I mean, we typically send out with, Connie now, Rock here, Wendy here. What does the meeting now do? Advance delivery of meeting materials is somewhere on, I'm not entirely sure what it's saying. At least four calendar days prior to each regular special board meeting, if we can, she'll get the items. I think the language we just changed is to, so that everybody would understand what a work day was. That's what the other policy.
I think it would be helpful to add work sessions on here, too. As far as like this today, the information session maybe is a better word. Because it would have been helpful to review these policies, you know, before I got here.
I think that would be nice. That would be nice.
I missed it. Where did?
It was emails.
Emails.
And.
Okay, I just didn't see it.
We didn't on the first meeting when we were here, but we did like. Of course, it isn't actually that.
We'll try to do that every session, so that you do that time to review these before coming.
But I don't know if we need to add that. I don't know if a special board meeting would include an information session too like this, or.
We can add that if that's what you desire for.
I think like, for example, the session we had about the hazardous waste, it would have been very helpful to have the soil and gas sampling report in advance to look at. There was no way to look at it during the meeting and try to listen to the speakers at the same time. So just, that's what we're examining.
Okay. I think the difference, too, if you look at item number three here, that would assist board members to become informed of the issues proposed for board consideration. The purpose of an information system is to inform you for your consideration at an upcoming meeting that you'll have, in opposed to something where you're going to have to take action. So it's kind of hard to, given you everything in advance, part of giving it to you, well, that's the purpose of the information. Right, exactly, yeah. There's no action. All right, we'll back up and get the ones that were mine. Back to clients for those meeting law. Does anybody have any questions on this?
And in this pack of policies there, there's changes.
Straight out of the.
Straight out of this school board association.
And law.
I'm just checking my email. Which email did it come from?
It came from, on November, it was, it was November second at six oh one, Friday, November second, six oh one. Sent to all the board members and not called.
Thank you.
So, series two thousand policy, November eighth.
Twenty-three-twenty.
Twenty-three-twenty-one.
Twenty-three-twenty was over my head.
Did anybody have a chance to look at it?
There's twenty-three-twenty.
Did anyone have any questions at time about twenty-three-twenty?
I mean, it's just really copy statute.
Any? About say twenty-three-twenty?
Done.
Twenty-three-twenty-one?
Well, I did not receive it. I just checked my email. And perhaps it's on my personal email, but it didn't come from my board anymore.
All right, twenty-three-twenty-one. Anyone want to take a check, a second reading?
Relates to closed sessions. Noting that they'll only be held or required to permit the board to act in the public interest of the law. And here, unless the permitted purposes against the chance, pretty much just law, right?
Sorry, that was.
What the law is, why you can have your closed session meeting.
Comments or questions?
We often have a lot of problems coming to this kind of stuff, too, with, um, to under, under closed session, you also pay them.
Under permitted for process.
Yeah.
Anybody have any change, please?
Good reminder. Any other comments or questions? Twenty-three, forty? Wonder which year we're allowed to vote in the board, to, to nineteen thirty-four years? Questions, John? Just before. That how long? Questions? Voting methods for both voice, vote, like you can show again, you're not sure. Got to think about it, everybody. Questions? Anybody? Twenty-four hundred, board policies, says that you've got policy. You have adopted. Twenty-four ten, policy development. This is kind of a new one for us, you already read through this one. Any board member, individual, group of students, this group of citizens, students or employee may initiate proposals for the policy or changes to existing policies. Initiator shall refer the suggestions to the superintendent for study prior to public discussion of the proposal and board action. As appropriate, the development of proposed policy, the superintendent will seek input from or attorney, professional, school, personal, parent, student, as appropriate. Questions? Questions? You want?
Yeah, I'm just concerned that we have to be careful to keep the balance here between the duties of the superintendent and board.
Ready to next one?
Okay.
Policies may be proposed for adoption, amendment, or appeal at any board meeting by any member of the board provided superintendent. Thus, the place that proposed policy on the agenda must be made in accordance with board policies.
So does that mean you have to go to the superintendent first in order to get it on the agenda?
Whatever, whatever the policy is, it's how you get on the agenda. Whenever that changes. Do note that policies introduced and recommended to the board will not be adopted until a public meeting does time to give it a permit further study and also to present an opportunity for interested parties to react. However, temporary rules will may be granted by the board and rule formal policy under emergency conditions or special events that take place before formal action.
I think the purpose, if you read two, four, one, zero, and ten, three, four, two, zero, is, well, yes, board members can have, I mean, if they want to have the policies, they can suggest them, but there can be major ramifications of policy decisions that can have wholly unintended consequences that a, the board member or the public may not take into consideration. And so, the idea is to let the superintendent and the administration review the impact of policy changes or policy considerations. It doesn't prevent that policy go forward, be adopted, but the board itself can't quite, well, it would not be good policy to think that the board would adopt something without having had the administration take a look at it and see what the ramifications that could be unintended or not. So that's kind of the purpose, is to, to let the administration study, review it, and talk about it, and then to be able to intelligently address board member requests and comments when it's being moved for adoption. But I think that's how that works. It doesn't prevent anyone from wanting, two, four, one, zero does not prevent a policy from going to, it just gives the administration time to review it and to see how it may affect other things. And it may, you know, yeah, it may be wholly, I mean, the policy may be suggesting something that's entirely illegal, or, you know, some, something like that can be dealt with very quickly. So I think it's more of just a time-saving matter and also a way that the administration can be prepared for, could be sweeping changes, could be very minor changes.
Any other questions?
Dissemination and preservation of policy development. Basically, in summary states that we have to hand the policies in a place where they're accessible as in electronic. We do have them available in physical form as well, but we don't make massive copies of that for a number of reasons, not the least of which is trying to keep them updated as policies get changed. Very hard if you have notebooks distributed throughout a school system to keep up with making sure that they're up to date. We keep them up to date on the website all the time. We keep them up to date in central office and in physical form. And then, if people have a need to get them, I even hand carry a book on time to a man of armed, so we'll be happy to. It's what we need to do, it's what we need to do, in paper form for some reason.
The nice part about the school board association is that we will have yearly updates provided for us when there are legislative changes. So that's part of the benefit of the subscription, that will help us stay current.
Any questions? Twenty-four forty, policy review and evaluation.
We asked a question. This is the second paragraph, can you expand on, kind of, you, you, I'm asking you, turning around.
Yeah, the, I was just looking at that myself. I can't really think of a situation where that would come up, because generally our laws are written in summertime, and most of the time they don't go into effect until January of the next year. So we will have had plenty of time to, our state laws at least, the board will have plenty of time to have new policy in place, review. What this is talking about is, in the moment the law changes and it's in effect, it doesn't matter what your policy says, the law trumps policy. But I think what this is saying is that, in the event that a law has changed and it has immediate ramifications, or perhaps the case has changed interpretation of the law and it's immediate, the superintendent can make those changes that are immediately necessary to comply with the baseline of law. Because we don't want to have a policy that says one thing, the law could just say something different. And then, if the board can go back and change it, however, there's room for interpretation, a room to change, board can do that prospectively at its next meeting, but it gives the superintendent the opportunity to say, okay, the law was black on Wednesday, it's now yellow on Thursday, and our policy has to be either like that. The board, you know, it's not, the board doesn't have to come together and, you know, make a change to a policy in two days. So it's a very limited scope in what the superintendent can do. But I can only think of change, maybe changing the case law, when a court says this and that's effective then immediately, we might change, we might have, change the policy quickly.
I can give you an example of something that, that we thought might have been applicable to our system at one point. And this definitely paid schedule for employees. There was an interpretation that they could be paid on a certain scale. Then interpretation turned out to be changed by a lead attorney general. The school system should have notified, it was, it was mistaken, it thought that we were one of the ones that was not in compliance with the new change. It turns out we were and always had been, they were competing us with another system. But the other system that was not in compliance had to make a change immediately. They didn't have an opportunity, it had to be done that day. And that's the reason that the calls came so quickly, had, it actually been applicable to our system, superintendent would have had to have this kind of policy for lead in place, otherwise we would have been violated about statutes. That's, that's the kind of, like, thing that happened three years ago.
It's a narrow policy that allows just, and, like I said, only, and like P. Solomon said, only in the small situations where something needs to be done immediately. It shouldn't affect general statutes, even federal statutes, because, you know, well advanced, never change. Because, you know, there's a lead period for the going of fact, but, like those interpretations of state regulations that can change from a dime, or the Supreme Court says, this is how, you've got to do it now, then we need to be able to change real quick.
Any other questions? Twenty-four fifty, suspension of board policy. Operation of any section or sections of board policy not established by law or contract may be suspended temporarily by a majority of board members present in board meetings held in compliance with law and board policy.
I can, I can think of a hundred.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Board education delegates to the superintendent of schools to power acting cases in which the board has not provided policy statements to guide them in their action. Superintendent shall inform the board promptly of such action and will release the policy.
This is legally a very important policy because it does give superintendent the right to take action when there isn't anything clearly on point, so it provides on protection both to the superintendent and the school system, who are not operating outside of, he is not operating, he or she is not operating outside of any express authority.
What's the difference between doing this and calling an emergency meeting of the board if there was a concern? If we already have the, we're going to include the emergency meeting, is this really necessary?
I mean, sometimes, the only thing I would say is, if it rises to the level of emergency meeting, obviously you'd have that, but sometimes there is a situation that needs an answer immediately. And, I mean, emergency meetings, maybe you can get people together in four or five hours, but sometimes you need a decision to be, a student matter, need a decision made immediately. And there's going to be a situation where there's not going to be something that covers it. You just can't have policies covering every situation. So, I mean, I imagine it would be sparingly, certainly if I was a superintendent, I would not be going out on a limb making up things when I don't have express authority. But at the same time, by God, if something needs to be done, needs to be done. And if you wait four hours, you could be putting, perhaps, in certain situations, student safety at risk, or, or something, some safety issue, and that's why, we need someone to be able to make a decision quickly.
I guess I would be more comfortable if we could add a sentence, just to make sure there's that balance of powers there, that there would be agreements process, you know, that we could link it to that cross-reference, that grievance process, that an appeal could be made to the board if, you know, a party involved was not happy with that, that decision.
Are you asking that if they're not? I don't think this is, this is going on in an emergency situation.
I mean, I, because, we don't know what the situation may be, as it just.
That's why I, um, you know.
Right, I'm just saying, if the superintendent did that in a case where there was no policy to guide him, perhaps, it's possible they could make the wrong decision or something and that the injured party would want to appeal the decision to the board.
But I, well, that the, if, appeal rights inherent, I mean, at any point, a parent's going to be able to still appeal or administer a personnel. So I, I don't necessarily see why cross-referencing, cross-referencing, that would be unnecessary, but I think that's, that's inherent in every policy. But that's.
Well, there's not, there's not prohibition for appeal or administrative decision, hence it would be within policy for being that, right?
Well, under the, when we get to, I mean, new agreements, a parent has, I mean, this would be agreement, I suppose, to, superintendent makes something that, that was, their parent would be able to follow agreement exactly, so immediately it's covered, it's, it's, you need to cover. If it, yes, any, I mean, anytime, a parent's going to be able to make agreement, right, this would be covered, so that goes to every policy.
Right, I guess because it's cross-reference, I mean, a pretty good, I, I just.
I, I think Art Boland had a, a good example of a situation that would be useful.
You know, I would really envision this for emergency safety issues, and I guess the best example I can give you is the, the accident that a young man, a student, at K C Robertson High School, if you recall, immediately mandated to an out of my office to be, and with, with no policy in place, immediately a mandate, there would be no students whatsoever on, in those type of areas. But that, that's where I would envision this, this particular, um, um, policy or authority to, to be used strictly in a, in a safety, and to me, that needed immediate, immediate concern of policy, of, of system, I don't know.
Right, and I guess the, the policy that was put in place temporarily to prevent the Gideon's from distributing materials in the schools is another example, and I guess I'm just curious if that maybe, think about it, is that still in place, that, that delicious materials can't be distributed right now?
We now have a distribution policy.
The policy for distribution is still in place. I mean, it's the one we just adopted, but we don't have the, we haven't actually put in place that, we're going to talk about it tonight, but.
That's policy, you did adopt policy six fifty-two and six fifty-three. Six fifty-three and six fifty-two both have some relevance to your question, but our discussion tonight, I think, is going to be more direct, to answer.
Right, so, yeah, currently, they, they can't distribute. So, yeah, currently, they, they can't distribute the bibles right now. Policy twenty-four seventy, administrative procedures. Superintendent is responsible for developing administrative procedures necessary to implement board policies. In developing procedures, the superintendent should consult appropriate with principals and other school system personnel, parents, students, the board attorney, and other professionals. Superintendent may establish formal administrative procedures or use less formal documents, such as memoranda, so long as the documents are preserved and disseminated in accordance with board policy. Board may review an administrative procedure at any time and direct the superintendent to modify, expand, or omit procedures. Principal school personnel are encouraged to initiate improvements to the educational program and services for students through school rules, standards, and procedures. Unless specifically addressed by the board, the superintendent may determine what matters will be addressed through administrative procedures developed in accordance with policy twenty-four seventy, which we just talked, and what matters may be addressed through school rules, standards, or procedures established by the board. Principals are responsible for school rules, standards, and procedures, and are encouraged to involve staff, parents, students, professionals, as appropriate to the issue. At any time, the board or superintendent may review and direct the principal to modify, expand, or omit school rules and standard procedure. Policies must be consistent with applicable policies of the board, the administrative procedures of the superintendent, and any other applicable law. Principals are responsible for completing handbooks, and those staff and student handbooks are located on websites, and then press copies available that will contain school rules and procedures for each school to be sent home to parents who may not have computer
Yeah, this one had, there are two options the School Board Association provides. Option A is a more detailed one, which provides really a lot of more procedures in it. Option B just says, basically the first paragraph, it leaves it open. Most boards that we work with have done option A, because it provides more guidance. This is pretty straightforward to process, right, and these are board hearings, so these are going to be applicable to personnel matters that come to mind, student discipline matters, any hearing that comes forward to board, this is one to be the policy that... As you can see, it is cross-referenced with the post policy. Discrimination, harassment, student parent grievance, grievance for employees, the discipline policy, the student admissions policy. This is kind of the main, the workhorse of the board here.
The chance, if I'm saying correctly, is that option is as it is in the School Board Association, you only not craft it yourself, it's the same one, it's you get a choice of option A or you can amend it in option B.
Yeah.
Like downline choosing the law?
No, I mean, it just covers, option B really doesn't cover anything aside from, like I said, assuming the first paragraph. And so the problem is, when you, this happened the other day in, I think, Swain County, we had to craft basically a whole procedure for hearings for the board because they didn't have it. So I think they're going to change now to option A, just because this already contains everything, because we need procedures for a specific hearing, you can always draft and look at those, but this, as written, you can deal with without any situation that comes to you. As, as right now, we don't have to change anything. Now, that doesn't mean we, we won't given what hearings come, and each hearing has been collected, but this is pretty much set to go.
Questions, comments? And again, if you need more time to review this, you certainly can take a couple, get over to that changing. Are there any restrictions as far as, like, you can't file a grievance if it happened six months ago?
Yeah.
They can appeal to have a hearing, I guess that's, it should be in here?
Those are individual policies, because they're different for each one. And so you'll find those, I mean, there's a specific, a statute actually deals with student discipline, so it's specific to the employee grievance, I'm not sure what else off the top of my head what it says, but each one will have its own statute of limitations. So putting one right here may not necessarily capture all.
Consultants to the board, policy twenty-six hundred. Situations demand the board may utilize consultants from various fields, including architects, personnel consultants, instructional, educational consultants. In each case, the board will advertise the proposal as required by law, or as deemed necessary by the board, and will enter into a written contract with a consultant collective outlining task, gives the core and dates of completion and evaluation. I don't think that all, if I'm saying correctly, all contracts don't have to be, or serve a contract.
I was going to ask, would it be, would it be appropriate for a change in a, something along the lines of, I'm not assuming it's to the perfect language, but in each case, the board will advertise proposals if and as required by law. Just three words, proposals and as, if, and, it's a term of end, I just don't suggest that, because there are certain circumstances where I think that is not required, and if you, if you read it strictly as a risk, it could indicate that it's placing a greater burden than is required by law.
What about when you hire a consultant to do a team building activity? That would be an example.
I mean, there are others, but certainly that's one.
That was my question as well.
I remember this board, for example, years ago, had a retreat where we went with one of the local companies to do that, I don't think it worked. Advertised, we didn't have it for that. And it wasn't required by the statute.
Very few things are actually required by the statute.
I just, that's, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, I like that.
As needed, the board will enter into contract for legal services of the school system, including both legal advice and representation and litigation. Any attorney retained by the board or the superintendent through school system funds represents a legal entity of the school system and not any individual board member or administrator. Superintendent may consult with board attorney as needed to carry out administrative operation and to protect the board and the school system from liability. Other staff may consult with the board attorney following procedures established by the superintendent. Chairperson of the board normally will decide for board members when to seek legal advice or assistance on certain matters. An individual member of the board desires to consult directly with the attorney, the board member shall notify the chairperson of the legal information to be sought. If it is determined that legal assistance is necessary and has not been sought previously to this matter, the board member will be directed to consult individually with the attorney. Questions raised by members of the board and the attorney's replies will be reported to all board members. The chairperson of the board committee may consult with the board attorney on issues that arise out of and in connection with the committee's work. The inquiry and response will be reported to all board members. Twenty-six fifty, lay upon us, School Board Association. Board instructs the superintendent to keep it fully informed of the affairs of the state and national School Board Association, and to keep these organizations informed and directed regarding the board's concerns and official positions on matters of common concern. The superintendent shall include in each year's budget the cost of membership in the North Carolina School Board Association. All board members are encouraged to attend meetings, conferences, and seminars of the state and national organizations in order to familiarize themselves with the latest developments in school affairs. Board also will attempt to be officially represented in association affairs through the election of delegates and or servers to the governing assemblies of the school system. Questions? That is the other half of section two thousand, the four years. As you think about these or spend time with these, and you see ideas that you want to bring forward to the committee, please email them to the board members, and myself will know later than the fifteenth of the month, and then I will send those to you.
Do everyone get this? Again, there's the members of the committee, just make sure you send me a copy of everyone.
I'd make a suggestion, without having to send the emails out to anybody, I don't know if this, this may or may not be necessary, but much of that word plays, but because there are numerous cross-referential policies which will be adopted, like, would it be appropriate in the case to be, something along the lines of, except, maybe the policy that's yet to be adopted, so reference will need to be, policy currently existing.
I like the more education, if, also, it's... That is, that is...
Yeah, the intent is, there'll be two, on the, on the, there's the text that it might be helpful in.
So that everyone understands that we may not have a policy that, seventy-six oh one, but we find the one that best fits, and make that application.
Any other questions or comments? I got, in general, are these, are these more detailed or less detailed?
More detailed, more of them, more policies more detailed.
And how much, and how would you feel about adding that to the... I assume we're going to try to keep up to the, on the, for the whole purpose of this to have an arm and a leg, and...
Yes.
But is that, is there a lot of stuff that you can add to that?
In certain areas, especially like the student section.
Student section, we're going over now, David, daily, practically, there are a lot of things in that that they like going to eat, but they're also trying to be within the spirit of keeping things as minimal as possible, because the whole purpose is, when we get these updates, we can save money and deal with it quickly. So that, they're dealing with that. Board members, any other questions or comments? No one more?
Well, I'm, I'm just, I was going to send everybody an email with the grievance process and other school system uses, but it seems like it's on their website for parents, it's very easy to understand, I just don't want, when we get to forty-ten hours, to get bogged down, and maybe that's something to compare with, because it's very straightforward.
Anyone else? All right, we're, we're pressing down now.
Thank you.